All right, I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I always like to begin by reading our mission statement, so it reminds us of tasks. Our mission is to inspire an each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. I feel like that's always the perfect segue to Avon Achievers. So I'd like to invite Dave Kimble forward if you'd like to welcome Mary Dean and Eric Story. And Jeff will join you as well.
I'm gonna invite Mary Dean up first.
Why did you say question?
Say something. Those of you who don't know Mary Dean, she is a specialized teacher at Avon Mills School. And she is serving as a long-term sub, which has been with us for much longer than a long-term sub. Started last year to cover our maternity leave, and when that person didn't return, suddenly she stayed on with us, which is spectacular. What I need to say about Mary Dean is that she works with some of our students who have the largest needs on a social-emotional spectrum. And she does this with grace, she does this with poise, she does this with a consistency that I haven't seen in anyone else. And she does it with passion and genuine caring for her students. She's a vicious advocate for her students. And she doesn't hold back, not in any way. And she does this with a smile and great dance moves. She comes in dancing to work every day, and this is not a lie. If you stand in front of the door, she is dancing, and as she comes in, it's great. And she brings an energy that has infected our entire faculty. And she has won the respect in the hearts and the minds of not only our faculty but our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Story. Those of you who don't know Eric Story, he is an English teacher at AMS in the eighth grade. What can I say? From one English teacher to another, I would be honored if my kids encounter a teacher like you. Hands down. Absolutely. The passion that you bring to your classes on a day-to-day basis and consistency, I don't care when you go in, I don't care what class it is, I don't care what day it is, he gives 100% of himself every single minute of every single day. And you see it in his kids, you see it in the work that they produce, and you see it in his work with his colleagues. The work that you've done not only at our school, but also working with the high school and the district as well, has helped push all of us forward. And you do this again with consistency and respect not only for the heart of Brighton, but you do it with a love and a passion that is just great to see and experience when we give our class 100%. And thank you for all of you.
That was very kind words that Mr. Kimble shared. Mary and Eric, thank you so much for bringing that to Avon. We're lucky to have you. I'm dying to see some dance moves perhaps on our way out. Quite an honor to want your own children to be taught by an educator. So I really appreciate that we have you with us and that you brought some of your people with you too. So thank you so much for coming and sharing this story with us, because I think we benefit from hearing about what you're doing out in the schools. So I completely commend you for all of your efforts. I also want to allow you to leave. If you've come for this portion of the meeting and don't feel compelled, you're welcome to stay, but I don't want you to feel like you have to. But we've certainly enjoyed having you here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. It's just us guys. All right, so approval of the minutes from the last monthly meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Houston moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously? Communication from the public? I know Mr. Lizinski wanted to share. Do you want to come forward and state your name for the record?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Lizent. I come before you this evening to speak about the new turf field. I, like so many, am excited about the upcoming construction and ultimately watching games on the new field, and I'm excited to see that they're already started. It's great after all these years. I, like many, have followed the turf project for many years. During that time, especially the recent past, much was made about the use of crumb rubber as the infill for the field. I'm not here to rehash that debate over crumb rubber, but I will say that many people, members of the Board of Education included, opposed crumb rubber regardless of the unsettled science surrounding that particular infill material. So the new turf field will be constructed with the use of coated sand, and at this point, I think we are all just happy that the turf project is progressing. Moving forward, given the fact that the school district has concerns about crumb rubber infill, I am here to ask that the Board of Education give consideration to imposing an immediate and permanent ban on any and all athletic events where our student athletes may have to play on synthetic turf fields where crumb rubber infill may be the infill. Obviously, this will impact all away games where the opposing teams play on crumb rubber. Regardless, the Board of Education has now set the precedent. Obviously, any exposure to crumb rubber must be prevented. The health of our children is at risk. We now have to assume that there is no safe amount of exposure. If our student athletes can't play on it here, they can't play on it anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. All right. Moving on, we have Amir with us tonight. If you'd like to update us on what's going on in the school?
As in long time no see, I have a couple of points. So the first thing is the math team. This is their second time winning the state championship. And also following after that, a capstone is now finished for the seniors, as most, all seniors have now presented in the February time and April. Coming now is our prom, which will be held on June 1st. And this weekend, the 26th, 27th, and the 28th. On the 26th and 27th, at 7:30, they will be playing Pippin here at Avon High School. And on the 28th, at 2 o'clock, that's a Sunday, that's when they will do their last show for Pippin. And also, I'd like to throw in graduation will be coming soon as the season, as the school season starts to wind down as we almost enter into May. And then from there, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Amir. All right, now the financial report. Ms. Mashad?
Sorry. Between February and March, the budget primarily remains static as far as expenditures goes as we started to close out existing purchase orders that we were not receiving through those services on and reopen purchases. So that's pretty typical of that time of year. At this point, the most significant change is the database has been closed as of this morning. It'll be closed for about a week, so that a projection can really be made for that year-end look. It also gives the schools the chances to provide all necessary transfers for their year-end expenditures and reconcile lines, and then it'll be reopened for them to do final purchasing for the year.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Mashad? All right, moving along. Committee reports, curriculum and professional practices. Jackie?
We did not meet. Our next meeting is June 4th at 6:00 PM at Central Office.
Thank you.
That's all I have, is you need me.
Sounds good. All right. Finance, Jake?
I don't have anything to add to Heather's report except our next meeting is May 14th at 6:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you. Negotiations, Jason?
Nothing for you this morning.
All right, and policy?
So there was no April meeting of policy. However, our March meeting occurred after the regular board meeting. The primary agenda items had to do with policies regarding sexual harassment around students as well as staff. We also talked about the creation of a dress code policy and addressed administration of medications in the schools, particularly in our camps. And our next meeting will be, it's Tuesday, May 6th, if I want to say. Yes. Excuse me, Tuesday, May 7th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Liaison reports, Board Rep to Curriculum Professional Development Council. We have not had one. There is another coming in May?
May 30th.
May 30th, thank you very much. Next, Board Rep to the Avon Board of Finance, David?
Okay. We had the budget workshop meeting a few weeks ago. Upcoming is the town meeting on May 7th. And in the meantime, as you know, the budgets are set and the mill rates are set. And now the next question is, will the voters approve?
Thank you. Any questions for David?
A reminder, we have the town meeting, right?
Yes. We are, was it May?
Yeah, 7th and 6th.
6th. May 6th.
Oh yeah, it's May 6th, that's right.
And then May 6th.
At 7:00 PM.
I had 7:00 PM with the senior center, correct?
No.
And then referendum vote is May 15th? Am I correct on that? Okay, at the senior center again. Board Rep to Avon Town Council, Jason?
Yeah, I can give you an update of both the Town Council and the Turf Field Building Committee. On March 20th, the building committee met. The recommendation that the committee made was to have the Town Council award the project contract to Mountain View Landscapes. The committee also recommended the Town Council add the lighting bases as well as buffering to the contract above and beyond the original proposal. So the next committee meeting is on May 8th. Following the last committee meeting, the Town Council met on April 4th. I was away for that meeting. I don't know if anyone attended, but I do know that the committee adopted the recommendations made by the building committee. So the field contract was awarded to Mountain View Landscapes as recommended along with the addition of the bases and the buffering. The only other item on the agenda from that Town Council meeting that really looked of interest to us was a $211,000 appropriation that had to do with the high school water heater, boiler, and tank. I don't know what happened to that. I imagine they approved it, but I don't know for sure. Other than that, the next meeting is Thursday, May 2nd.
Thank you. Ms. Mashad is acknowledging that they did approve it.
Sure.
I'll settle with that. Thank you. All right, Board Rep to the Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
I did go on Wednesday. It was a very well-attended meeting, and the Board decided, voted to extend the executive director's...
Contract.
Contract. Thank you. Yes. And that was about it.
Thank you. All right, moving right along to the Board Chair update. I was really probably just gonna remind you of our upcoming Town Council commitments. We already did that. So I am all set, moving in along to the Superintendent report.
Thank you. We have had some resignations and retirements. You see on page 13. We are moving toward those postings. Some are in anticipation of the budget being passed, but we are still posting the positions to be able to move forward with our hiring practices. Our enrollment report on page 14 shows what I would normally say is a fluctuation up and down of a few students. More important than that, I wanted to bring up tonight something we've spoken about previously, and that is the kindergarten registrations. As you know, we started doing them earlier, we held them during the day. We did a lot of public relations campaigning to bring folks in to register in person at Central Office during the day and at night. And we've already held an orientation also. Where we are right now is with 124 students registered at Pine Grove and 67 at Roaring Brook. That doesn't mean that there are not a number more people that may need to come out and register at Roaring Brook, because it's unusual for it to be nearly half of the amount. And we are looking at some ways to cross-reference the information. For example, there were some families that were at orientation but had not registered. So we're following up with them to get the registration process solidified. And going back out for another round of reaching out, trying to make sure we get the rest of the students in town registered. However, at 124 at Pine Grove, we've pushed the limits of sections and space. So this is my preemptive piece of information that we are going to look at the possibility of changing some students moving forward that may register from what might have been Pine Grove to Roaring Brook. We need to do that at this point. We have done that in the past, from what I understand. We try to simplify it, certainly by not splitting up siblings. Someone already has someone at Pine Grove and so on. But we do need to take a close look at it, because we simply don't have any more classrooms to make another section of kindergarten. And so be compliant with law as well as best practice. For example, we have to keep kindergarten classrooms on the first floor. We're out of spaces. And that's even giving up rooms and having some folks moving on cards in the arts or the music and so on. So I'll be back with a plan when we have more solid numbers, because as I said, I'm still a little bit concerned that everyone hasn't truly registered yet, but there wouldn't be such a discrepancy. But I also don't want to wait until the 11th hour to decide what we're gonna do with the overflow of students at Pine Grove.
This is just the kindergarten students, we're not talking...
Kindergarten students.
Okay.
That's correct. Anything you would add to that, Dr. Rusak, for having done this before?
No, I think we just have to keep an eye on it and be proactive and step react.
Right. So that's what we're doing.
I assume that this is who is moved for kindergarten and moved for higher elementary school.
Yes. And so that's one of the things that we have to consider, because we would be changing transportation for all of them for their entire experience through fourth grade.
Pertaining to enrollment, has there been any conversation between the Superintendent and the Town Manager and/or Director of Planning and Zoning regarding proposed development that's going on now at Nod Brook and at the Avon Town Center that has the potential for adding a significant increase in enrollment?
We've had some preliminary conversations that I'm aware of what's happening, and the same way I think you all are and anyone in town is. But we've not engaged in any real conversation about what that might look like with a projection of children in households and so on, which would have to be done for us to consider having a plan for moving forward.
And there's also another one, sunlight construction that could be in the Friendly's area, neighborhood, kind of adjacent to, you know, housing that's already there. I mean, after Buckingham's built, that was when there was a huge shift in population, like by virtue of more families moving here. And I think it's something that we need to be looking at long-term.
I agree. And in an effort to be as proactive as we can be, while it's been in flux, what we have started the process of is, for lack of better explanation, remapping every building. What, every room, what's every room being used for in all of the schools, so that if we had to look at movement, we would know what rooms currently can be utilized as classrooms and are being utilized as classrooms throughout the districts. So, under Strategic Plan Update, we are continuing forward with our work on the Social Emotional Learning Committee that we have established. We have had three meetings at this point. Two, the third one is coming next week with personnel from throughout the district. And we've started developing a framework for what that looks like. Great work being done there. Got very interested and active participants, as I mentioned last board meeting, from all facets of our organization. We are still continuing forward with our literacy work and our review of the English Language Arts Curriculum from K to 12. We also have work going on in math, particularly from 7 to 12 right now. And we are, I will be sending something to the Board that I will also be sending out to the school district. We're moving ahead with doing another, what we would call a coherence review of the district. Where are we in terms of what was put in place from the strategic plan already, even though it's still early? So I would consider it, to some degree, baseline data, again, of, you know, where are we? Are we working on the right things? What would our plan look like moving forward? Does everyone who has a role in the school district understand what we're working on and why? And we're working with the Center for School Changes, we have been all along. They will come in and help us do some of that review. And I'll be sending out a little bit more information about that. We'll be completing that within the next two months. So more specific information to follow, but just letting you know that's the path. Continuing to head down. I just want to point out a couple of things from the agenda. The job descriptions that you see on the consent calendar, this is a continuation of the project that we have undertaken to ensure that we have job descriptions that are valid and on file for all roles in the district, which is something we have spoken about not long after I started, from what I remember, in part, so that we have them accurate when we're doing contract negotiations, for example. And we have clear understandings of what roles and responsibilities are. And they're also directly related to the organizational chart that Mr. Medd put together. This is part of the continuation of that work. So these are not new positions. These are existing positions. There are individuals in these positions, as you know. This is just any job descriptions that we found that had not been updated recently with language that's compliant, for example, with American Disabilities Act or anything else to do with our policies, or if roles shifted over the years and someone who used to do X now does Y. We are slowly but surely going through all of them. Generally speaking, you know, what I have brought to the agenda have been the ones that needed something done with before we hired someone. So for example, when we redid the informational technology positions, we brought those job descriptions because they were changed and they needed to be before we filled positions. That's the way I've been looking at it. Whatever was necessary more immediately, we brought more quickly. These are just as we go back through the stack. Because we have some job descriptions that we haven't been looked at in a while. We did have some positions that didn't have job descriptions. And we had some that were draft but were never finalized. And we've just been working out it so that we're consistent. Obviously, we get to the, you know, if there's any other questions about that, I'd like to be clear about why they were here. I've been bringing them all forward. Also, I just wanted to circle back to the discussion about the lights. I had a meeting with Mr. Tomo-Davy from Acorn. And I believe the Board knows this, but they are actively raising money to install the lights at the field. It's because of some of their work with the town that the, I'm gonna call them the wrong name, the stanchions were put in so that during the construction phase, so that it was easier to install the lights later on. But it's a considerable amount of money that they are looking to raise. It's just around $400,000. And so she met with me to talk about how we might be able to help, how we might be able to partner. And it was just an initial meeting for her to catch me up to date. And anything else that there is to pass along, I will certainly pass along. But I know they were working very hard at that. They had a goal that they'd be able to have them in by the fall. They were really hopeful. And I think, Jason, you probably heard this too, with some of the meetings. They were hopeful that they got done alongside the project. But with that amount of money to raise, I think it got...
Yeah, I would agree. I think that was the hope. And I will say, just from sitting through these meetings, this is a general statement, that I think the lights in general, if they're gonna happen, a big step is gonna be that the neighbors really wanna feel comfortable that we as a neighbor have an arrangement going in about how the lights are gonna be used. And I think, I think it's one of those things where you don't really know how it's gonna be until the lights are up and the neighbor can get to see how it affects them. So I think it will go a long way in getting the lights if we work together with the neighbors to kind of go in with an initial agreement that, whatever it might be, like here's how we're gonna use the lights to start. We'll revisit in six months or a year. But I think that's a large issue in terms of the lights.
I agree. And I don't have, I don't have it to share with you. I'm not certain where it exists. So I'm gonna ask the Town Manager now that I have this meeting with Susan. But I believe, and Jason, maybe you can speak to this, that there is already a list written of kind of allowable use. The number of times they might be able to be turned on, the hour at which they'll be shut off. 6 o'clock rings the bell. I believe there might have already been some agreement that's made that we weren't...
All of that was discussed, I think, several years back when the initial committee was going through all the kind of initial work. And I do think you're right, that there was a list of times and hours that was put together, whether or not it was officially stamped as this is it. I don't know. But I think you're right, that there is some type of list like that that exists.
That's what I've heard.
I think Tim Pylon and Muthcheko had those conversations. There was a tentative schedule of sorts.
So I'll follow up on that, see what else I can find out. Also, and I'm going to turn it to Dr. Rusak for this piece. At previous board meeting, when we were speaking first about the course of studies and then about the scores throughout the district and standardized testing, there was a question from the Board related to how we utilize information that's provided to us from the College Board, particularly the AP Potential Report that they sent, which is a report that comes out every year and is directly linked to the PSAT scores. But the question was raised. I wanted to make sure that answered the question. Took a little bit of follow-up on Dr. Rusak's part to do that, because since the last meeting, we've had a school vacation and a ton of things happening. So some of the last pieces of it, I just found out today, and I'll let you do that.
Sure. So after the board meeting, I did speak with the Principal and Director of School Counseling. And both of them were new last year, so they had to go kind of check it out and get back to me, which they did. And so for the upcoming 1920 school year, the AP Potential scores were not used in terms of recommendations. What was used was pretty much what Mr. Requist shared when he presented to the Board a short while back, which was a change in practice, that teachers were required to conference with students individually about their courses, what they, you know, felt they were capable of doing and kind of, you know, that push-up, so to speak, but also being cognizant of all of the courses students were taking. Since then, and, you know, us asking the questions, Mr. Requist has started the conversations with his department coordinators to really decide, you know, is the AP Potential a useful tool? And how might we embed that in some of our current practices? And how best, you know, would we use that in supporting of that? Because one data point isn't necessarily the best way to go about it. They have done some initial comparisons, and again, it's just a couple, because they're just getting into that as they're seeing what students are registering for. And they looked at the AP US History Course, and what they found out is that teachers recommended actually 22 more students than the AP Potential recommended. So they're gonna continue going through that with the different courses and do those comparisons as they move forward. But with that said, as teachers make the recommendations, they all have access to the PSAT scores, the SAT scores, at both the teacher and the department levels to assist with making those recommendations. So it's not like the information wasn't used. It wasn't used through that particular tool for the 1920 placements. So as they continue that work, we can get back to you with updates.
Any questions, Dr. Rusak?
I guess I hope we do follow up. I think it would be interesting to see, of those 22 extra students, were they the ones that the AP recommended? Or were they kind of organically recommended?
The AP Potential did not recommend these 22 students. So the ones AP Potential recommended were there. But we had 22 additional students that our teachers recommended that were not recommended by the AP Potential tool.
To be clear, that's one course.
One course. So, you know, we'll look at the rest of them there.
When we started asking more questions... When we started asking more questions about it, and there's new people sitting in the seats, this is how far they got with finding the information before we're here tonight, so I just wanted to make sure we followed up.
So we have not been using it, we have not been using this tool?
Not recently.
This would be a new, a new tool that we would introduce if we decided to use it.
But it would be used in conjunction with other pieces, not, you know, kind of that one-stop shop with that one particular tool to make those distinctions?
It could also be used as a conversation starter with a student. You know, you didn't register for this class, you didn't seem interested, but AP Potential says you can actually do, be successful.
Right, right.
Do you want to have that, do you want to consider that? So we have to look at it as a two-way street as well, especially because we've talked about trying to increase that participation in advanced placement. This may give a teacher a starting point with a student.
Or their counselors.
Or the counselors.
Other questions? And that's all I have to know. Oh, I, shoot, I believe we may need to have an agenda item added under new business, is a, there's a possible action, right, that we might need to add?
So when we come out, like this piece, do we add that in there or just leave it open when we come out of executive session?
Well, the rules of order here, so we have, we have an executive session to speak about possibility of review of a contract, so we should have an agenda item that...
Can I say discussion and possible action?
Correct, yes.
Just to change the wording that way?
Yes.
All right, do I need a motion, a motion to add in possible action on item A under executive session?
So moved.
Okay, Houston moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, thank you. And now moving towards the consent calendar. Everyone is comfortable, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as assistance?
I do have one follow-up question to the superintendent's comments about the job descriptions. I don't necessarily need to move them off the consent calendar. He answered most of my questions, but I just wanted to make sure I understood. The first two job descriptions, benefit specialist and payroll specialist.
Yes.
Those are full-time, correct, salary positions, no benefits.
Yes.
And the third position is a finance assistant, that's an hourly position, hard time, no benefits.
Correct.
And that job description identifies an hourly rate, and the question I had was, that's set basically based upon what we feel a fair hourly rate is for this type of position in the, in the market?
That's how it was originally set, and now it goes through the superintendent and will be discussed actually at the legislative meeting.
Because that's also a non-affiliated contract, so there is a range that it could be hourly, to be clear. That's the range of fair market that you see on the job description at this time.
I just want to make sure if I'm approving a job description that has an hourly rate set, that we're setting an hourly rate in the description.
A range.
A range, right, a range, you're right, that's fair to the description.
Yes.
I don't want to lock it into a range that's higher than the description.
No, understood.
So we feel this is the fair range for this, for this job.
Yes.
Can I just follow, sorry. I just want to be clear, though, this position is currently in existence, and this range meets the current...
With the person's being paid?
Yep.
Yes.
And that there hasn't really been change of responsibilities?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, we just didn't have an approved job description.
Point of order, why don't I, I will request that the three D-E-F be pulled, because we're obviously having a discussion, and that's not the point of the consent calendar.
Yeah, Houston's right, I'll second that.
Well, doesn't require a second, it would be done unilaterally by anyone.
Okay, so...
We did it.
I did it, baby.
Good job.
You're welcome.
I'll move to approve the balance of the calendar, A, B, C.
I'll second that.
So you, I'm sorry, for clarification, all three, D, E, F, you're moving to taking off the consent?
I didn't move, I requested they be removed.
You're requesting to take, D, E, and F.
Correct.
Thank you.
For a seconded?
I seconded that A, B, and C be approved under Houston's motion.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, so now for the matters of D, E, and F, are there any other questions or concerns? We can still approve those.
Oh yeah, sure.
So in the past, we've actually gotten copies of the contracts for all non-affiliated employees in central office, and I'm just wondering if, as a matter of transparency, during the budget process, if we're going to get that again, so that we can actually see what these positions and other non-affiliated positions are being paid at.
So you have the current contracts?
We do have all the current non-affiliated contracts?
Yes, they've gone through the board approval process.
The new ones?
The current ones.
The current ones, but are there any new ones coming up beyond where we've already approved?
No, but, so we have the executive session tonight to discuss the negotiation strategies of the non-affiliated contracts that you're talking about for the coming year.
Okay, so these are all, I just want, sorry if I missed the point, these are, none of these are new?
None of these are new.
Okay.
These, no, these individuals all, these positions all have individuals in them, and they all have current contracts, and you have seen all of them.
They just didn't have job descriptions.
They just didn't have job descriptions approved on file.
This is just in keeping with the cleanup work.
As a point, these, these job descriptions were previously approved, I believe, in 2015.
Excuse me.
The changes to them reflect the position titles of Ms. Mashad and myself as the supervisors, the director of boards, the descriptions, the roles and responsibilities are. They have been, they have been reviewed, they remain identical and are true to their current...
Should have corrected me earlier.
My apologies.
Sorry, so but the compensation...
Because I've looked at so many of them, excuse me.
That's fine, I'm sure you're, you're, but the compensation for them would be readily available to anybody who's looking?
They're all, yes.
Anything else, or motion to approve D, E, and F?
So moved.
Houston moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those pass unanimously as well. All right, under new business, we do have a supplemental appropriation of open choice funds. Ms. Mashad, would you be willing to speak to that?
Annually, this is brought to Board of Education and hopefully forward if we are fortunate enough to receive additional funds through the involvement of the open choice program. As you can see, this is a bit different this year. Avon Public Schools did not exceed the 3% population threshold of open choice students, whereas in several years past, we had hit that 4% threshold, which that increased the amount of tuition per student that we received. In this case, we're receiving that 3% threshold, $6,000 per student. We had exactly 120 students enrolled as of October 1 PSIS count, which is what they use to calculate our population as the tuition that goes with it. That being said, there is that other portion of being a part of the open choice program called the Early Beginnings Grant. We have not been budgeting for those funds because of the uncertainty to do with that particular funding. That being said, we did receive the check this year, later than it had been, but we did receive it, and on top of that, we also received a small additional bonus to that open choice program that we have seen traditionally. I'm not going to pretend I understand that calculation, I don't, but altogether, we are requesting the $113,000 and change from the town who has received all the funds this year.
Any questions for Ms. Mashad?
Motion to approve.
I have, Jay has a motion to read.
I have the formal motion. Motion to approve a request to the Town of Avon for supplemental appropriation totaling $113,024 in additional unbudgeted open choice tuition revenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Passes unanimously. Next item, school year 2018-2019 graduation date. Did you want to speak to that?
But this is the good news.
Yes.
This should be the easy part. Currently, our last day of school, which we expect to remain the same, knock on wood, without any rain or snow, is Monday, June 19, and so we are proposing, sorry, excuse me, 17, we are proposing that the graduation date for Avon High School be Monday, June 17.
And we need a motion to approve June 17 as the graduation date?
So moved.
Okay, Jackie moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Passes unanimously. Amir, you get to graduate on June 17.
I'm already hoping that, but it's official, after tonight's official.
Do we have a time?
We, I do not have time to share tonight, I believe it is 6:30, but they are working out the last of the details, so I don't want to publicize, I'm public. We don't want to put that out, we invite you.
Thank you.
I, of course, didn't allow them to finalize it until the date was approved by the board, so...
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Through the chair, May, I just, I know we've approved them, I just, I want to be clear about something else, I want to come back to the, to the job descriptions, because I don't, again, in being transparent, if we're looking at what the board is looking at and what is publicized, the date approved by the Avon Board of Education says pending on all of them. They're not, they're not redlined to, for the public or to the board to see when they were previously approved. And so the part-time, I think the full-time positions had come up for approval back in 2012, and they were done again in 2015, and the part-time person, I'm not certain of by, by what we have, and not that, you know, matters or it'll be in the big scheme of things, I just want to be clear because we just had a conversation, that if you are looking at these, they all say Board of Education pending, which leads one to believe they've not previously been approved, because we're not looking at the redline version, so to speak. And as I said, we do have some in the district that we've not brought through the process, and we have some that we've brought through more than once, so I just want to be clear, it's not, it doesn't change anything, Ms. Mashad or Mr. Medick, I, if someone's looking at the board packet online, they're going to see a pending approval date.
Thank you. All right, our third item under new business, policy 5141.22, administration of student medications in the schools. I don't know if you want to speak to that, or...
I mean, I can speak a little bit to it, but the superintendent can certainly provide more clarity. This is a policy that had to be updated to reflect state statute, but we had also waited deliberately to hire the new director of administration of medication and health, all things pertaining to health, so he has since...
Our medical advisor.
Medical advisor, thank you. He has since reviewed it and given a stamp of approval. Dr. Carter-Moore, if you'd like to add, or how this is actually going to be carried out?
All I will add is that we have had several conversations in both policy and here at the board level about this policy already, and as Laura said, this is simply, we were waiting for the new medical advisor to sign off on the existing policy, because it is his license as a physician that carries this policy. So for example, Narcan was brought up, and we have to have a medical advisor who approves in the use of Narcan in case of a suspected overdose, be able to have it in our policy. We already had it in our policy in the, the previous medical advisor, as I said in the previous board meeting, we expected no issues moving forward, however, as a matter of course, we went through the entire policy with the new medical advisor, he has now signed off on it. If there's anything else for us to discuss, if there are questions, because we've gone through policy so many times.
Is this a first read or a second read? The agenda's not clear.
I believe we have already done a first and a second read.
We had already done both.
We just didn't prove it.
We had tabled it in order to allow the medical director to get it.
So, we don't really have such a thing, I didn't think, as a third read, we just put it on.
Renewed second read, there you go.
It's a two read.
All right, any other questions, or?
So we need a motion to, yeah, we need, sorry, Houston.
Agreed, so, Houston moves to approve policy 5141.22, do I have a second?
Second.
Laura will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Anyone abstentions? No, all set. All right, and now, communication from Avon Board of Education members.
So, when I first came into the room tonight, the first person that I ran into coming in was Mr. Johnson, and I just want to personally recognize my gratitude to you and my recognition of you as such a fine young man. I remember vividly meeting you not that long ago, I was really just struck by the fact that you're a senior and you're going to graduate, and I've had the great pleasure of volunteering with you on a search committee, I have seen you here at many meetings, speak your mind, you are such a well-spoken, fine young man, and I wish you the best, and I think we only have one more opportunity to see you, is that right? Will you be here for me?
You have to be here with us tonight. You have to be here with us tonight, so...
Kudos to you, congratulations to your upcoming graduation, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
We'll do that more officially.
I just want to make sure I got that in.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, I do appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Just one thing, one of the items on the consent calendar was a grant donation into Pine Grove, and it looks like it was facilitated by a parent at Pine Grove. I was just curious, does the administration do something to bank the parents a letter or something like that?
Yes, we send a letter, and particularly when we have personal knowledge of who the person is, I will reach out more personally, but we will send the letter.
I assumed, I wanted to ask.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, so now we move to our second communication from the public. Mr. Macy or Mr. Lissens, did you think of anything? Okay. Thank you for joining us for this entire meeting, we appreciate having you.
Thank you.
Okay, so is it, is...
For the first one. No, for the, yes, for the first one.
Okay, so I'll...
And then just May.
Okay, so I need a motion to move into executive session, I would like to invite in Mr. Medick as well as Ms. Mashad and Tyrone Richardson, the UConn intern to the superintendent, and then we'll take a brief break prior to, but could I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay, Houston moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bogdan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any...